Yeah, yeah. Our song got around. We got ran for right here. Yeah, probably. No one ruined it. He could have lost his thing coming, so he... Yeah. 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 Sure. So, yeah. I guess all my way through. But, uh, stuff like that. Yeah. Yeah. Right. So, they're... Oh, I missed the note. Yeah. The worst thing was to show the other one that doesn't have... Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you all. I was married to one of your ilk for almost 20 years, so...
Really?
Yeah. Carperia Summerman Fire Department. He went from just line firemen, clear up the battalion chief before he retired.
Do you get the line on us? So, you stayed up about the... Where would you say?
That's a really good question. Does this look like laser pointer?
Well, I... Right. So, you could say that. So, this is... Okay. Okay. Yeah. You were back. So, this is... This is what we're giving you. This one actually kind of... The other one? Yeah. So, this is the area of... So, I grew up in G... Yeah. 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 Yeah.
That's a really good question. Does this look like laser pointer?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I... So, you could say that. So, so, this is... Okay. This is the one I've... Okay. Yeah. 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 Uh... Well, I... So, you could say that. So, so, this is... Okay. This is the one I've... Okay. Yeah. Yeah. You were back. So, this is what I just pulled. So, this is... This is what we're giving you. This one actually kind of... The other one? Yeah. So, so, this is the area of... So, I grew up in G... Yeah. 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 Right. So, that's... That's... Yeah. I should be... Yeah. 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 Right. So, fortunately, that is... Yeah. Yeah. Right. And for Google... On show... This will vary on... Right. It's... Right. So, then it's... Yeah. So, this is gonna... All right. All... I'll... It looks like it's... Here. Oh.
Yeah. Give it to the person who can stay seated. Okay. Thank you.
From talking.
Starting a little bit later. How did that thing go yesterday? That worked out really well for me. The having those people...
Yeah. We're gonna do that again. Kind of modify. We'll have a few, couple more speakers today, and then we'll break into that.
The weathering is pretty well the first day. It's kind of... Sucked in my back standing that long.
Yeah. It's a long time to be standing up. I've been doing more standing on this thing. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started, folks. If you could take a seat, please. My name is Chris Harvey. I'm with the Sacramento Fire Department here with Unified Command Team as one of the public information officers. Thanks again for being with us tonight. First off, I'd like to start by introducing Simone from Just Communities to talk a little bit about our Spanish language translations tonight.
Hola, me llamo Simone. Y yo y Marla vamos a estar ofreciendo mi interpretación simultánea del inglés al español ahí adelante del auditorio. Hi, my name is Simone. Marla and I will be offering simultaneous interpretation from English to Spanish available at the front of the auditorium. Unas guías cuando trabajando con intérprete. A few guidelines when working with an interpreter. Por favor, te pedimos que hablan un paso más dorado. Si necesitamos que hablan más lento o despacio, voy a estar haciendo esta señal. Um, we ask first of all that you speak at a moderate pace. If we need you to slow down, we will make this signal. También pedimos que hablan en voz fuerte y clara. Si necesitamos que hablan más fuerte, voy a hacer esta señal. We also ask that you speak loud and clear. If we need you to be louder, I will make this signal. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd also like to take a second before we start to once again acknowledge the hard work of Joe Black, our ASL interpreter, who's been here with us all week. So, thanks again, Joe. Last night at this meeting, we had to shorten up a little bit, and so we changed the format. Tonight, we have a little bit more time. We'll return to a little bit more traditional format. We will take some questions from the audience with a microphone, try and get your questions answered in that respect. And then again, we can break into our face-to-face, one-on-one groups after the meeting, either down here in front of the stage or in the lobby. And we'll make sure you get all your questions answered before you leave. Yesterday was a hard day for us. As one of my colleagues mentioned earlier from the stage earlier this week, my patch says Sacramento Fire Department on the side. But when we're down here, we all consider ourselves your fire department, the communities of Santa Barbara County and Ventura County. And when we lose one of our firefighters, it affects us all, even if their patch is different from ours. So, I'd just like to take a moment, if we can, please just have a moment of silence for Cal Fire engineer Cory Iverson, who lost his life yesterday battling this fire from the Cal Fire San Diego unit. If we could just take a moment, please, thank you. We're gonna start tonight with an operations update from Unified Command, one of our incident commanders, Rocky O'Plager.
First of all, good afternoon. My voice probably sounds a little raspy. That's just, I think, the number of calls and meetings that we've had. It's always a difficult time when we lose one of our firefighters, one of our family members. This morning, we did the operational brief in Ventura, and I did the closing brief in Lake Kachuma for the Santa Barbara zone. And, well, it's a tremendous loss, and all of us carry that, the hearts and feelings towards the family and Cory's family and Cal Fire. You know, losing one of theirs, but it is a loss within the fire and emergency services. So, certainly, our folks, we pay that respect, but we've got a job to do. The focus today is where the fire is, and we're gonna talk about the operational date. But the fire currently is at 252,500 acres. It's about 3,800 acres from being the third-largest fire in California history. We personally, right now, have 8,369 personnel assigned. We've dropped 733,000 gallons of retardant to date and a combination of water, just over 4 million gallons. We're at 35% containment. So, we're gonna talk about what happened today with Chief Childers. Folks have done a great job. The most difficult part of the fire is always those last difficult acres that you're trying to get. The folks have done a tremendous job when the fire made its advances in Ventura County. And as it came into Santa Barbara County, Carpinteria, and now, of course, that immediate threat to Montecito and Santa Barbara City. The folks are in there just doing an incredible job. And I had a chance to meet with those crews that are physically on the line, cutting that line, those engine crews that are supporting that operation. And I don't think you could find better, greater support to the community than what we have right now that's on this fire. So, I'd like to bring up Chief Childers. Thank you.
It's always tough to follow the rock star. He would have probably been funny on a better situation. But let's talk about what's happening today. Can you by chance give me the operational map? That will work. And you're gonna show the... If I put my... That right there. Okay. Hopefully, at home, we can see that. That's the leading edge of the fire, and it is right in San Ysidro Creek. Our direct attack is working. We have gotten into that creek. It has not crossed it. We have aircraft hitting it really hard right now, and we have the direct line at least getting into that creek and trying to wrap around it and get an underslung line underneath it so we can start heading up the hill towards the Caminos Yellos. I told you last night, this is a terribly difficult, challenging country. And whether or not we can hold it in there, especially in face of those morning's wind event reports, we're not sure if we can. But let me give you... Continue the overview, and then I'll come back to that point. We're working really well right there. This whole part back here is getting... This is our county line right here, mopped up and put out. We have some work to do here, and still in the... Into Montecito, and we have some work right there. Now, we hold this tonight. We hold this tomorrow. We're gonna be looking pretty good. And I'm optimistic. I always am. But I'm not gonna tell you any lies and say we got it out. There's a wind event expected tonight at 5:00, 4:00 a.m. and maybe through noon tomorrow. And if it hits as hard as they hit, say it's gonna hit, with the fuels as dry as they are... We just saw today at fire briefing that the fuels are drier. The energy release component is higher than it's ever been in the history of recordings of the fire history of Santa Barbara County and Santa Barbara Ranger District of the Los Padres. That's time for us to be alert, and we have firefighters being alert. At 18:00 tonight, we're gonna have a tactical stand-down, so all of the firefighters are reminded of the safety and their need to remember this energy release component and the threat, and they'll watch for those winds. Now, can we say... We... But let me say confidently that we're not just giving up on this, and we're not giving in fight. The direct attack is working well, right where the hand is on the fire screen. In addition to that, we have hundreds of fire engines parked at and near these houses right along here. All of the homes above Cathedral, Highway 192, where it turns into Cathedral Oaks, but all the way over Foothill Drive, and all of the roads above that, we have hundreds of engines waiting in there, over 100 engines. Now, we have 100 more in staging down at the Polo Grounds. And we even went so far as we have the phone numbers of the people that are sleeping tonight and are down tonight and supposed to be off duty, just in case our lines don't hold and a firestorm comes into town. We have more people coming in there than you can imagine, and it's gonna be a massive firefight, and we're ready for it. Now, that's the worst-case scenario. The best-case scenario is these winds are only gonna be a pressure gradient of five. Maybe they don't hit so hard, and maybe we hold with direct line. So, there's the two sides of it. Does that help? Okay. My optimism says I wanna tell you the great things, but... And remember, a joke from Mark Twain, who said, "He's different, and I'm different than George Washington. George Washington could not tell an eye. I can tell a lie, I just don't do it." So, if you have any questions, come and see me afterwards, okay? That's where we are with this, is got a good overview. Everybody's comfortable. I mean, not comfortable with your understanding. So, hopefully, I've explained it well enough. And let me just finish off my explanation. So, that's our front country. This is our big... The next 24 hours, I'll either... If I'm not here tomorrow night, you'll know why, right? You know where I'll be out here. But as long as this goes decently, this is going really well. Into the San Inez River and then up to the Zaca Fire, that line is progressing well. The little firing back here is going well, and we should have this back country, hopefully, tied in by... In the next day or two. All right? Again, I'll be here for questions afterwards.
My name is Brendan Ripley, and I'm a fire behavior analyst with the Ventura County Fire Department. Just to kind of build on what both chiefs have presented to you, a little bit more explanation on what's going on and why there is the threat to the community as we come into this next 24 hours. The northwest winds that push into this area here, it introduces wind from a different standpoint than what we've had over the past, basically, 12 days of red flag warning. That red flag expired this morning at 10:00, but they reissued another red flag warning for the Santa Barbara coast beginning at 2:00 a.m. through 10:00 p.m. tomorrow. And that's that window that they feel those winds will affect this front coastline. The winds line up with the drainages along the San Inez Mountain. And where the fire is poised up there, it could mix down into the area of the front country. And that's why we've prepared for the worst, but hoping for the best. One of the issues that we have is this wind event is a little bit different because there's a component to it called cold air. And cold air wants to sink. And there's upper-level winds that are blowing the same direction as the surface winds, and those wanna push down. The countering factor that we have is the marine coast, the marine influence that sits here. So, as the onset of the winds begin, and it can be as early as this evening, but it doesn't meet the criteria of red flag, it will be light offshore, which will help to scour out some of the smoke that you've been plagued with. And then, as we moved into the early morning hours, those winds will peak in intensity and grow throughout the morning hours, and then diminish through tomorrow. And 10:00 p.m., we'll see where we end up and where the fire ends up. Our hope is, is that marine influence will hold and keep those winds from mixing down into that front country where the population is. That is our hope, and that's what we're looking forward to, hopefully. But the fact of the matter is, is that may not occur. Later on tomorrow afternoon, that marine influence may break down and be pushed out by those winds, and they could mix down into that front country in which they've prepared. Looking further into Sunday, we'll lose the wind in this front coast here, but I want to also let you know that you may be impacted by smoke again and ash fallout. We have a strong to moderate... Actually, a moderate Santa Ana wind that's forecasted for Sunday. And again, that cold air and those upper-level wind supports will bring some increased winds to the back country here, where the fire continues to burn through the vegetation that has that old growth or that non-fire history. And what happens is winds, when we talk about them coming out of the northeast, it's where the winds originate from. And they blow in this southwest manner. And as the fire intensifies, yesterday, it made a 1,500-acre run, and it backed into the wind. And from a fire behavior standpoint, it is astounding to see that type of fire behavior. Normally, you would get that fire growth blowing in concert or in the same direction with wind, but it backed into the wind, and that is what kicked up a lot of the smoke and impacted the Santa Barbara area. As we move on into Monday and Tuesday, we lose the intensity of those winds, but we will remain offshore under a light Santa Ana condition. So, just to kind of give you an idea of what can unfold over the weekend, tomorrow night at 10:00 is a benchmark to see where we're at on the front coast as we look at the impacts from fire. And then, as we move into Sunday, there will be some more issues in regards to smoke and possible smoke impacts to the Santa Barbara area. As we also assimilate those northwest winds, if you live down in Montecito, this area here, it's direct line with the northwest winds coming in here. Where you may have been clear over the next 24 hours, you may be impacted by smoke again. And that could mix down all the way into the Ventura area. So, we just wanna make sure that you have an idea that you don't wake up in the morning and go, "Oh, here we go again." If you live in some of the areas that have already been impacted by fire, we just wanna make sure that you're understanding what is transpiring and how that smoke may be traveling through the coastal area. I'll also be here for questions if you have anything. Thank you.
I'm Ben Ellenberger with the Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District. I'll just follow up with a little bit more about the air quality we saw today and what we're expecting tomorrow and then on through the week. Let's see. Is this... So, this was the forecast from today, and today's conditions were a little bit better than they've been through the week. It's still unhealthy for sensitive groups into San Inez and on the south coast, and getting worse as you get further east to Carpinteria, where it's unhealthy. And what we're expecting for tomorrow is, as you heard, the winds could improve air quality, especially in the northern part of the county tomorrow, and possibly improve in Galita and Santa Barbara. But we're still expecting, as you get further east, air quality will be worse and unhealthy in Carpinteria. All of this is very uncertain, and conditions can change. So, we're cautioning people and recommending that people visit our website, ourair.org. And we're posting current air quality to the site. And also, we have notices and these maps and forecasts in both English and Spanish. And we're also cautioning people, even though general air quality may be good in an area, especially as the wind picks up, to be cautious about ash getting kicked back up and being exposed that way. Thank you.
My name is Tom Fayram. I'm with the Santa Barbara County Public Works Department with the Flood Control District. Just a brief update. We've been talking about as the fire starts to move to the east and areas... I'm sorry, to the west and areas on the east become accessible, that our forces will start moving in to prep debris bases, basins that we have in place. I had earlier reported that we would be starting that work today. However, out of error for caution and safety, that work will now start on Monday. But as we've gotten briefed in our EOC, either fortunately or unfortunately, there's no rain on the horizon, so we will be able to get our work done in time. So, we'll be starting in earnest next week to get all that work done. I would remind folks, as you are allowed back into your homes, to assess your individual properties and know there's a homeowner's guide to flood prevention and response on our website, And then that'll link you to all of the flood control resources. And I'll be available for any questions about any of our work after the end here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Adame. I'm a community outreach coordinator for Santa Barbara County Animal Services. I just wanted to remind everyone that our hotline is still active, 805-681-4332. We are still accepting evacuated animals and can assist with evacuations. And the other question we've been getting a lot is there are a lot of properties and people who were not able to evacuate their animals. It wasn't feasible for one reason or another. Sometimes there's large aviaries or other things like that. We are available if law enforcement and fire personnel tell us it's safe to go in and feed and water these animals. If this is something that is a service that you need, please call our hotline, and we can hopefully arrange that for you. Thank you. The hotline number is 805-681-4332. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Citi Ponce. I'm the captain with the California Highway Patrol here in Santa Barbara. We wanna thank the public for their continued patience and support as we have to close the 154 in the mornings. We do ask that you use the 101 as an alternate route all hours of the day, if possible, because the 154 will have extended delays all hours of the day. We have received reports that there have been near head-on collisions as impatient motorists have tried to pass long lines of fire equipment. Please don't do that. That's... We don't want another collision to happen with our fire personnel or with the public where someone gets hurt. So, please, please, continue to be patient and avoid the 154 if you can. Also, we still have 20 fixed posts along the 192, and our officers are under the direction to not allow anyone in. So, please, don't argue with the officers. Just do what you're told. They're simply trying to keep you all safe. And I would be remiss if I did not thank our dispatchers, who are behind the scenes all day long, taking 911 calls, trying to keep account of all the officers that we have out there. And they've been doing an excellent job, so I wanna thank them. And I just ask for your continued support and prayers for our first responders out there fighting this fire and just continued support for them. Thank you very much.
I'm Sheriff Bill Brown, and I'm here to talk to you a little bit about evacuations and some changes that occurred today and what to anticipate this evening and tomorrow. First of all, today at about midday, the evacuation order for what we call Carpinteria 5 and 6, and if we can get this map, we can... Where's the pointer here? I'll show you. In the areas right here, these areas here, 5 and 6, they remain in evacuation, mandatory evacuation order. However, we are allowing residents, residents only, to go in and out of that area to their homes. They may require an escort, but we are allowing people to go back in there. The evacuation warning for the areas in Carpinteria below that, right in this area here, from south of 192, north of 101, east of Casitas Pass, and west of Rincon Point, including Rincon Point, those warnings have been lifted. So, that's the good news. The other news, not necessarily bad news, but the other news is that all the other evacuation mandatory and warning areas remain in effect. You heard that the fire services have made significant progress today and in the last several days on the fire, but there is a major concern about the potential for a wind event that could occur as early as late this evening or early this morning through tomorrow morning. So, in particular, I wanna reemphasize... So in particular, I want to reemphasize that anyone who is in the evacuation warning area, which currently is from Mission Canyon, right here, and everything east of Mission Canyon that is above Highway one ninety-two, if you're in this area, that is, that is evacuated. If you're in this area below it, this is evacuation warning area, right up to about here. And these areas in particular, over the next twenty-four hours, need to be very, if you live in that area, you should be very vigilant, because if this fire was to break through, the likelihood is that we'd come down into the area, into the Riviera area potentially. And so if you live in this area, which is kind of the interface between Montecito and Santa Barbara, all the way down through the Hot Springs Road area here and all the way down into Coast Village Road area, just above one oh one, if you're in that area, you should be prepared to evacuate. And we don't want you to get panicked, but we want you to be prepared. If you live in that area, you should, right now, if you haven't done it already, be assessing if there are some irreplaceable things in your home that you can take with you, that you can pack and have ready to go at a moment's notice. And we're talking about photographs, small heirlooms, things that are irreplaceable. If you get an evacuation warning, be cognizant, I'm sorry, if you get an evacuation order, a mandatory evacuation order, please evacuate that area immediately. You need to be able to go in a moment's notice, and you need to have a plan. You need to have a plan of where you and your family are going to go, and think of that ahead of time. You can go, obviously, to friends' or relatives' home, have a plan to do that. There is also the evacuation shelter, which is available at UCSB. So you need to be ready to go, you need to have an idea of where you're going to go if that occurs. And I want to just conclude by, for the last several days, we focused on people who have been, obviously, the frontline firefighters and law enforcement officers who've been out there, are getting a lot of thanks and recognition, but there's a lot of other people who are behind the scenes or are not getting a lot of that recognition as well. You've heard about the dispatchers. We've talked about the staff who work in our emergency operations centers and are providing a lot of information and keeping our websites open and so forth. So I want to make sure that we recognize and thank them as well. And in particular tonight, I want to recognize and thank our search and rescue team members. They are directly involved whenever we have an evacuation. They've already helped us evacuate these areas that have already been evacuated, and if we have to do any further evacuations, they will be integrally involved in that as well and have a plan. In all of these areas, you can see these evacuation zones, they're all broken down into smaller sub-areas as to where team members are going to go and who's going to work in what areas to evacuate. So I just want to give them a shout-out tonight and a thank-you for what they do, not only in this fire event, but also throughout the year and all the time. They're a tremendous group of men and women. And then lastly, I just want to indicate one more time that this fire is not going to be something that's going to be finished in a day or two. It's going to be a long battle to, to get this over with. We have to be understanding of that and prepared for that, but recognize that we've been through these before, and we will get through this one as well. You've got the best fire service people in the world who are working on doing the best they can to put this out, and they're supported by a huge army of professionals who are equally excellent at what they do as well. And I just want to say thank you to all of you for the support that you continue to provide to all of us. Thank you.
I'm Vicky Collins, and I'm here on behalf of Agency Administrator Poncho Smith, who is the District Ranger for Santa Barbara and Ojai Ranger Districts. Once again, Poncho extends his appreciation to all the agencies, cooperators, and the community as we work together to get through this event. I thought, at this point in time, when about half of the acres of the fire are on national forest lands, you might be interested to know that part of the staffing of the fire includes resource advisors and bear team members, that's the Burned Area Emergency Response Team. Our job is to work with the Situation Group, the Planning Group, the Operations Group, and the Command Staff in order to protect the resources that make the Los Padres so special. These include threatened and endangered species, cultural resources, those areas of tribal concerns, and specially designated areas such as wilderness, Wild and Scenic River, and wildlife refuges, and many others. In addition, the forest is host to much of the infrastructure that helps support the front country and coastal communities, including the utility lines, communication sites, roads, water systems, and so on. Any of those facilities that are damaged during this event, we will work hand-in-hand with you to help get them repaired and up and running as soon as we can. Thank you so much.
Okay, we're just about done. We'll go ahead and open it up for questions here in a moment, but before we do, I just wanted to echo the words of our sheriff and our CHP officer tonight. The firefighters and law enforcement personnel assigned to this incident often get a lot of thanks and public recognition, but there is a small army of logistical and support personnel that allow those people to do their jobs, mechanics, fuel stations, cooks, janitorial service, basically people that help the base camp run and allow the firefighters to do their job. So I want to make sure that they get some recognition. In particular, the California Conservation Corps. The CCC comes out to our fire camps, and these young people work very long hours for very low pay, and I can say that because it's their motto, and we're very grateful for the fact that they support us. So with that, let's go ahead and open it up to a few questions from the audience, some general questions, and then we can break out into our small groups if you have more specific questions for our subject matter experts. Anybody from the audience? Sir in the white hat? Yes, sir. Oh, here comes a microphone behind you.
So would it be correct to say that there's been no large-scale backfiring today on that western edge?
Chief Childers, are you still here? That's correct? Yeah, there's been no large-scale backfiring operations today. Ma'am?
What does a pink ribbon on your mailbox mean?
So the pink ribbon, we call flagging, and it's just for our crews to use as, as points of reference when they are navigating through the, through the neighborhoods. It's generally a place that we need to turn. Sometimes that flagging's also used to mark hazards, like large trees that may fall, but if it's tied to your mailbox, I'm sure it's just a, a place for them to turn. Are you at the, is it at the base of a long driveway or an access road? Okay, so that's probably denoting a place for, for access for our crews. Anybody else? Sir?
I have a question about the air quality maps. It seems to imply that, that entire region, and when it's broken down, is being forecast by one reporting location. Is that true? Or are there recording locations all around within a border that's up there?
Each one of those regions represents one monitoring station. So yeah, we do want to caution people that that station reads at that location, but it can vary throughout that region. So yeah, so people should look at their local conditions, what they're seeing, and also how they're feeling, how they're feeling.
Let's take one more question from the audience, and then we'll go ahead and, in the meeting, and break up into small groups. Anybody else? All right, that's good. It means our questions are being answered. Is there one more? Oh, here we go, right in front.
What's the schedule for these over the weekend?
So as far as I know, at this time, we're still planning on having another meeting here at four p.m. tomorrow, but we will put out a press release first thing in the morning if that changes. We did secure the use of this facility through the weekend, thanks to our friends in the school district, one of whom literally lives nearby and is coming down with her keys to unlock the, the building for us. So at this time, we are planning on having a four p.m. meeting tomorrow, and if that changes, we'll put out a press release to that effect tomorrow morning. All right, thanks very much for coming, folks. Good night.[1761.16][1761.16]